Smile on his face.
That's an idea.
He has teeth a lot.
Mayor, did you get your packet?
I have my packet, I have some things I need to sign.
Okay, great.
You just gotta come here and get them. For you to see in the head.
He wasn't the last one, was he? He wasn't the last one.
It's kinda common.
He wasn't the last one, was he?
I'd like to call the February meeting, the regular meeting, the City of Uniontown. I'll be conducting today's meeting, we have the mayor on the phone. He is not a member of the quorum, but he is, will be a member, a voting member of today's meeting. Roll call.
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mayor Gurke?
Here.
We go rise as the clerk leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will receive comments on the agenda, are there any comments on the agenda? Mr. Trot?
Name and address? Brad Trot, 135 Virginia Avenue. I wanted to comment on seventeen and eighteen. For seventeen, so that's the acceptance of the resignation. I don't know if there's an expectation that this position's gonna be filled, but I do hope that there will be a good exit interview. Some of the things I, I wonder about are, are what has been learned between the time that Ms. Marshall started the position and what has maybe changed with respect to the expectations of that position. And I think she'd have a lot of good insight to give there on what that job should look like if there's a new incoming candidate. So if we're thinking about the, the position description for somebody that we're looking to fill that position with, I think she'd have some good insight there. And some things I could think of specifically would be with respect to some of the technological requirements of, of the position and speed to market on communication. I know social media and just content management for the site in general are probably a challenge. And so if we could make those sort of a requirement or a, one of the skills that we're looking for, for an imposition, I think that'd be a really good idea. As far as Agenda Item Eighteen, the proposal to, I think it's just a proposal to work on a job description for a city manager. And I wanted to just speak in favor of moving forward with that. And I wanted to point to, a couple of years ago, the CMU report was done by the Carnegie Mellon students and I, I think that they strongly recommended having a city manager. And to quote them, "It is our strong recommendation that Uniontown consider creating an office of the city manager in order to create greater governmental efficiencies and expand the resources available in Uniontown. To go on, managers ensure that local government is being administered technically efficiently and transparently. Like private sector businesses, city managers provide direct executive leadership so that department heads all have a single point of leadership and are able to coordinate each department's resources to maximize efficiency." Other things that they would do are help to manage financial and human resources, oversee delivery of essential services, oversee implementation of the comprehensive plan, improve data-driven decision-making and project implementation, ensure all ethical, financial, and legal guidelines are being adhered to, work to, work with local partners to develop grant proposals and other funding streams to help Uniontown achieve goals. And having a city manager will also help the city be a stronger candidate for state and federal philanthropic funding. And my hope there is also that in the realm of continuity, knowledge handoff, all of that sort of stuff, we would, we would also benefit from having somebody in a permanent position who's, who's doing those things. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on Agenda Items?
Yeah, good evening, I'd just like to make a comment on Items Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five. Twenty-three is to transfer a Dodge pickup truck that was in the Recreation Department. When the Recreation Department started to contract out all the work, we started to use the pickup as needed and then it kinda turned into a full-time use. And it's a good truck and it's needed in our department and Parks isn't using it, so we're thankful to be able to hopefully get it. Number Twenty-four is to purchase two garage doors for the sewage plant garage. Last year we were able to purchase two and hopefully this year we're able to purchase the other two. I know that it would greatly help on the heating costs of the building as I know the heating costs for that building, I believe, is around thirty-five hundred dollars a month right now when it is during winter time. Number Twenty-five is to authorize K-2 to advertise for a sewage project that they've been preparing. A few months back, we had a break on Dunlap Street and we rented a machine and tried to repair it ourselves, but that guy, an employee got hurt on the job site and it turned into a larger job than we could handle with our small crew. So we patched it together in hopes of getting it out in advertised bid to repair. And then, I missed one here, number Twenty-six is to hire Terrence Price. He's been working part-time with us now for three weeks, I believe. He's a good fit to the crew and he's a quick learner and able to do any duty you assign him, whether he has to, and he's willing to learn anything he has to. He's a good fit and seems like a good guy and would be a good addition to the team. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on Agenda Items?
On Agenda Number Twenty-eight, which I'll go into more detail on my report, of course, but the modification hearing will be held on February eighth, so this approval of modification is just to improve it, to move forward when comments close, which will be February twelfth. So this is a contingency until then.
Thank you. Are they, are there any further comments on Agenda Items? With that being said, clerk, would you read the first resolution?
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to receive the report of the treasurer for the month of January twenty-twenty-four, be in the same as hereby received and filed. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the minutes of the January second, twenty-twenty-four reorganization meeting and the January second, twenty-twenty-four regular council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Uniontown for January twenty-twenty-four invoices. In the General Fund, forty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Sewer Fund, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Recreation, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Recycling, nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. Highway, five thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Off-street, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. Library, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Mr. Billy?
I'd just like to say thank you to all of our staff at the city. Forty-one thousand dollars in the very first month is a very low number. It's really important that we hold this line and, and if we look in our profit-loss, the amount of money that we've actually brought in so far this year and what our expenditures are, so it's really important right now because we are spending retained revenues from last year. So I really would like to curb that down and try to hold that line. And there, there are some spending in this, in this meeting and this, and on this agenda that some of the stuff we could push back a little further and that is because where we are at in the beginning of the year before we start collecting, our sewage funds are in the, in the same area, where we're at right now will be, we're spending our retained revenues. So if I can just urge all of our staff at the city to be very cognizant of, of what our expenditures are. Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Kimberly Marshall from the position of City Clerk and Open Records Officer effective March eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Billy?
I have to say that this, this has come as a surprise. We, this is a unique position, it's a specialized position, this is not someone that off-the-street walks into this. Kim, we've, we've, we've had our ups and downs and I have to say we've had more ups than we've had downs and we've agreed more than we've disagreed. I have learned a lot dealing with you as city clerk and I just would like to say thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize and direct the city solicitor to prepare an ordinance for the creation of the position of City Manager, City Administrator. Mr. Billy?
So this is something, creating the, the City of Administrator and Manager and to just, you know, just touch base on what Mr. Trot had said, this is a very important position. This is something that we don't move into prematurely. This is something that we really need to make sure that we have the parameters and what the duties actually are. And at this moment, I am not in favor of it, so I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to adopt number seventeen, Bill Number Seventeen-seventy-five, proposed ordinance Number Seventeen-fifty-five, and ordinance of the City of Uniontown, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, amending the cloudified ordinances to add stop intersections on Virginia Avenue and Cecil Street, Virginia Avenue and Jane Lane, and Barton Mill Road and Pennsylvania Avenue, repealing all inconsistent ordinances and providing an effective date. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to introduce Bill Number Seventeen-seventy-six, proposed ordinance Number Seventeen-fifty-six, and ordinance of the City of Uniontown, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, establishing rules and regulations for city parks and public places, repealing all inconsistent ordinances and providing an effective date, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of City Council on March seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Full and complete copy of the text of said ordinance Number Seventeen-fifty-six is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve spring opening for baseball and softball infield at Bailey Park Ballfields for a total of three thousand dollars by Thomas's ProChur. Mr. Billy?
So this is a great time of year when we're getting ready to open up our Bailey Park. This is something that, you know, we close the fields down, we open them back up, this is part of the process of keeping those fields healthy. There's gonna get, there's gonna be a lot of action this year on those fields, so I am a totally favorite of this, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm abstaining, my vote, so.
Do we have to add clarification on why the abstention?
So with respect to abstention, if there's a question on the abstention, then the council member or, or elected official is abstaining, means they indicate the reason for their abstention?
Relation.
Okay.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Just to piggyback off of that, I was not aware that that was his family member. I pretty much, this is who the city has always used, I feel if anything is not broken, I fix it, so that's why I picked this vendor for this service, so I did not know.
No, I'm a total agree that we've, we've done work with Thomas.
Okay. But yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to rehire Joe Walkus in Parks and Recreation at Bailey Park for the Uniontown High School Baseball Season and Summer League Baseball Programs for field and park maintenance from February twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four through October of twenty-twenty-four at a rate of three hundred dollars per week. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve transfer of two thousand and ten Dodge Truck Number Seventy, used by the Recreation Department to the Sanitary Sewage Department. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase and installation of two garage doors for the sanitary sewer garage from Bud Hall at a cost of four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars each. Mr. Billy?
So I'm, I'm not in favor of this purchase right now and, and the reason that I'm not in favor of it is, is that being that it's early in the year and where we're at right now with our expenditures and spending retained revenues that we've carried over, I'd like to see this purchase come back up later in the year, so I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize K-2 Engineering to advertise for bid the Dunlap Street Sewer Repair Project. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Terrence Price to the full-time position of Public Works Employee One in the Street Department for a six-month probationary period beginning February second, twenty-twenty-four, with health benefits beginning after ninety days. The salary for said position is seventeen forty-seven per hour. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Uniontown and Fayette County Booking Center as presented. Mr. Billy?
Chief, Sister Witt, I'd like to thank both of you for working very hard on this agreement, and yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas under Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities for activities which will benefit low and moderate income families, aid in the elimination or prevention of slums or blight or other urgent community development needs. Whereas the City of Uniontown has met all the citizen participation requirements relative to the CDBG program and held a public hearing, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that the proposed modification to fiscal year twenty-twenty and fiscal year twenty-twenty-one CDBG program is hereby in all respects approved, contingent upon comment period ending with no adverse comments on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. The city clerk is hereby directed to file a copy of said modifications with the minutes of this meeting. That the mayor on behalf of the City of Uniontown is authorized to execute and file the proposed modification to the fiscal year twenty-twenty and fiscal year twenty-twenty-one CDBG program. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
And that's all I have.
So at this time, we have our monthly reports, Director of the Redevelopment Authority.
Good evening again. So on the Redevelopment Authority's report, we have the CDBG status meetings. We met with the new group of councilpersons, January twenty-sixth. At this meeting, we've welcomed new councilperson Trace Thomas and Angela Brown to join our group, but both the Sewer Department and Recreation Department have activities under that program, so we hold those planning meetings to discuss the next steps and how we're gonna move forward with, with those grants. Our next meeting is February twenty-third and those are recurring, we hold that meeting each month at ten a.m. Our next application for twenty-twenty-four will kick off in May, so start thinking about your projects now. In May, we'll hold the public hearing and folks can come in and request the three hundred thousand dollars for a project in the City of Uniontown that would be eligible. We have the twenty-twenty-four CDBG competitive application as well, which had a deadline of January thirty-first and we were holding a hearing. So rolling application, we can submit the application in the first round or the second round and the second round is after February. Due to the nature of the projects, we did need to shift that for application in or after February. The two projects that are being reviewed is the sewage line replacement on, along Liberty and on Persian Court. That project would need surveyed, so there's a random sample survey that will be conducted. The CDBG program requires the collection of certain demographics in an area before we were to use federal funds. So in the next couple of weeks, that survey will kick off and it's completely randomized, that survey goes out in the mail and there's going to be an online process for the residents along that road that's being served by that sewage line to respond to determine if the project's eligible. We were looking at another project, Fayette to Maine, a cured-in-place pipe on a sewage line there, that one there's not going to be eligible for the CDBG program, however, it could be, other funds could, could fund that. And I want to just point out here is, there's urgent, there's a more, there's other projects that might be higher priority than the ones the CDBG funds are funding, but these are the ones the CDBG can fund. So we're applying for those funds that are available now, even though there might be other projects that take, take priority. Those are still underway and larger grants are being pursued for those. In the packets is a quick glance review sheet for a project update. The two main projects for update this month is Lemon Street Playground, it's near complete. We, I believe we have our final certified payrolls and that should be wrapping up once we get the project signed. And then we're going to bid, we're opening bids on February fifth for the Pavilion and the large entrance sign that goes at that park. So we hope to have that done. We bidding it now, we wanna start it right away to meet the expenditure timelines on the grant funding that, that we have available for that project. And then the demolition projects, we've finished the environmental review, K-2 was able to provide the inspections and the final steps for valuation certifications is underway, so we should be able to bid those. We recently requested an extension of those funds on that activity and we hope to finally be able to start those demolition projects for those, those locations, eighty and eighty-two Lemon, fifty-five Lennox, eighty-four Murray, thirty-nine Winona, and two possible Long Murray. The actual expiring funds in the program, when I came here in March, there were a few grants that were kind of expiring that needed to be reviewed and that is what I have done for the past eight months or so. And to the point now where we can make a modification of these funds, it's gonna be the largest modification on one single shot that I've ever done in my ten years of doing this, so it's pretty exciting for me. But in February eighth, at six o'clock, we'll hold the modification hearing. And you, you heard on the Agenda tonight was approval to submit the modification, but we won't submit that until we hold this hearing. At this hearing, we're going to propose a few changes to the program and that is what we're going to accept comments on. We will be deleting one hundred and eighty-degree empowerment and the street reconstruction and an EMA rescue tool. We will be adding one voice, one community tutoring, grant street ADA improvements and state theater external rehabilitation and Calvary Playground. We will increase the funds for building demolition. And I want to make a note that I would love to use all this funding for building demolition, but you're only allowed to use a certain percentage and we're using the most that we can use per contract for demolition and we're pursuing other funds for demolition. So some of those other activities were deleted because there was no planning or they were either determined to be not eligible and the state is really encouraging us to do larger, substantial projects. So the Calvary Church Project Playground is, is one of those projects that was ready to is one of those projects that was ready to go. It was designed, it was ready to move forward. And it had willing parties to maintain and operate the playground for use. So all of those activities can be reviewed in my office, 8 to 4, or just email, and we can coordinate the time to review any of those for comments. And I'll get into much more detail on the 8th when we have the meeting, which will be here, February 8th, at 6:00 p.m. And then just to wrap up, we have K2 is having meetings for sewage transportation, March 15th. That will be CDBG project updates to review next steps, what other funding we can pursue. The home and fair funding is pending, but we did enter into a memorandum of understanding for 504 packaging. So that is a program that we can assist with for housing rehabilitation, for low-interest loans. So if there's folks that are needing assistance with housing rehabilitation, we're able to process those applications in the city now. We have two properties under pending sales. We're working towards the Story Square Maintenance Agreement with the city to set up the responsibilities of maintenance and, you know, what we need to improve there. And the local share account with the Downtown Business District is underway, under discussions with the Redevelopment Authority. We hope to submit a modification for those funds to be used towards the comprehensive plan. The Municipal Systems Planning Grant has been complete, and now we will move forward with the, what we're calling second phase of the comprehensive plan. We want to heavily involve citizen participation. We want to have meetings at your entities. We want to have meetings in the community and put together the rest of the comprehensive plan that needs to, that we need to be in compliance. And to do that, we believe we have some funding that we can modify, and we'll pursue other funding as well. The Planning Commission is scheduled, still tentative, February 13th, to have those discussions. The Planning Commission would be the body that's making those recommendations to the city as it should. Once we develop that scope, then we'll learn what the costs are and pursue funding. Excited that in December, the landlord registration program was transferred to the Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority is very excited. In March, towards the end of March, we're hoping to hold a landlord event, which would bring the landlords together in one area to discuss the landlord registration program, upcoming changes, and any other recommendations from landlords that would like to be included in that. If you're a landlord, reach out to me, because we're not just going to go all rogue and create some landlord program. We would like to have feedback, so we are creating something that is benefiting the landlords in the City of Uniontown. The Blight Remediation Plan Task Force will be set up soon this year, so we can start putting together the plans for all the blighted homes in the area that would need to come down. I missed January's meeting, so my report's kind of long. The State Representative Charity Grimm-Crupa meeting is coming up. We're welcoming the legislators to basically just open the doors of City Hall and meet with the legislators, explain to them where our energy is going, what projects we're working on, get the support of the state legislators. It's very important that they are familiar with the projects that we're working on. So we hope that that does that for us. And when we talk to them, we're going to let them know that we're looking at DCNR grants and Strategic Management Planning Program, and Greenwigs to Trails, and DCD multimodal funds. We want to let them know that we are gearing up to apply for those, so when you see them, we appreciate their support. And lastly, I wanted to just add the Strategic Management Plan. We would like to soon set up a work group with hopefully Budget and Finance Director and others that would be involved in moving this grant forward. This grant would be submitted to DCD. It's a 50/50 grant. That being said, it's 50% match, so we can get half of the grant, of the, half the total cost of the project. This grant would help fund a list of different eligible activities. Implementation of a multi-year financial management plan, professional consulting services to assist a municipality to develop and adopt implementation of that multi-year financial plan. And my favorite, the audits of the, to improve the management practices, financial administration, and organization of the internal operations of local government. Multi-municipal and regional intergovernmental cooperation initiatives, how we work with people around us. And this also would fund all the implementation activities that would come as a result of this plan. This is a very exciting opportunity. I've been involved in one other Strategic Management Planning Program grant, and I think that the state has created these as a guide for municipalities to follow. And the opportunity to apply for the funding is just heightened when we have this completed report. So you'll be hearing about more of that in the future. Any questions?
These future grant opportunities, Director, are these, is this something that we're going to have to come back to the table and rework a cooperation agreement for these separately?
So we did enter into an economic development cooperation agreement with the city, where they've been great to allow a stipend to help write these grants. We have three existing grant programs, grant entities, that are listed. One of them is DCD, the Strategic Management Plan. One of them is DCNR, and one of them's Municipal Systems Planning. So while those are listed in our COOP, prior to any grant submission, a resolution would need to be adopted at a council meeting. And prior to the Redevelopment Authority, incurring costs related to that grant should also be adopted by the board. So we do have Strategic Management Plan, but we're not going to kick those off until that's locked in, which I think we have done that one. But for instance, there's three or four DCNR grants. We can't proceed with the DCNR grants until we're basically approved to move forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief Kong? Thank you. Thank you for your report yesterday.
All right. I keep forgetting that things burn down, so. Every weekend or every month, so anyway. So good evening, everyone. And as always, start out a little rundown of the incidents that we ran. Ran the following incidents for the month of January 2024. Ten related fire incidents. These included three building fires, two kitchen fires contained at the stovetop, one trash fire, one explosion, one smoke scare, but no active fire resulted, and one scorch burned, but no ignition. We had 17 rescue-related incidents, 15 of these being motor vehicle collisions. Two of those had injuries. And we had two vehicle versus pedestrian accidents. We had 15 hazardous conditions incidents. These included one carbon monoxide incident, four incidents involving arcing or short-circuiting piece of electrical equipment, six power lines down, two gas leaks, and two building collapses. Seventeen service-related incidents. These included eight lockouts or gaining access for EMS crews, one assisted police detail, two water problem incidents, one ring removal, one cover assignment for another fire company, and two general public service calls and two odor investigations. We have one minor hazardous materials incident. We had 15 fire alarm activations. And the storms kept us kind of busy as well. We had eight storm and severe weather-related incidents. And that pretty much rounded out everything we ran for the month of January. Rundown on the training that we have either taken or conducted within the department for the past month. The department had over 48 man-hours of training for the month of January. Always do the apparatus and equipment updates. Nothing immediately due for testing, inspection, or maintenance. Nothing's broke, so we're saving money. That's good. So, and just a couple of miscellaneous things. A residential NOX box program. For those of you who aren't familiar with NOX boxes, we've had them on the commercial buildings in town for years. They are a secure key box that has one universal key that the fire department has. We can get in and get access to the keys to the building. That way, we can get in the building fast, minimal damage, and it's just a good thing. We found out that NOX has a residential program now. We're in the early stages of it. We're not finished with all the setup and everything yet, but pretty soon, we're going to make the details available to the public, how they can purchase the NOX boxes and how the program works. So, and I'd like to give kudos to Assistant Chief Smithberger. He took the ball and ran with that, and he's getting it set up for us. So we'll keep you posted whenever that's available. And last but not least, I'm going to put the new guy on the squad. What's the name, Tracey?
Bingo.
Bingo, 6:45 at the hall. Door's open right now, so any questions, anybody?
That's very good information for the residential NOX box. I like that.
Yes, absolutely. So highly recommended. And we'll let you know whenever those are available. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Kong.
All right, folks, take care. Thank you.
Chief DeWitt?
Evening, everybody. Mayor, Council, thank you for the vote on the Booking Center. Just for the general public who doesn't understand what that agreement actually is. That agreement essentially pays for two police officers in its entirety for the City of Uniontown. We signed an agreement, what was that, late last year? For a walk-in fingerprint center where the jail is anticipating taking all the in-custodies to the new facility. They've learned or come across the path, realizing they might have some problems with that, and requested that for us to keep the Booking Center to work an agreement out. And Tim, thank you for being available very rapidly on this to get this done, because this agreement, once the signatures hit it tonight, becomes effective today. So it's extremely beneficial for the health and welfare of our department and the city moving forward. A large majority of our equipment comes from the Booking Center money, and that's what we make purchases to help protect our citizens and have a lesser tax burden upon the residents. So during the month of January, the Uniontown Police Department responded to 747 calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included 20 vehicle accidents, four assaults, two robberies, two frauds, 32 welfare checks, 40 domestic, six assist fire calls, six disorderly conducts, 42 traffic complaints, 21 emergency medical assists, 15 assist other police departments, 12 harassments, two shots fired calls, 28 alarms, to include burglar and fire alarms, 20 thefts, four public intoxications, 18 animal complaints, and 65 suspicious persons activities or vehicles. We responded to two overdoses and administered an ork in on one of those. Officers made a total of 57 criminal arrests, issued 18 non-traffic citations, and 102 traffic citations. I know I touched on it at the last meeting, but we did have a homicide to start off the new year on January 1st. That male has since been taken in custody and transported back here, pending his hearings. Officers conducted vehicle and foot patrols of the city's parks, as well as the Sheepskin Trail and the new rec center, which the council passed at the last meeting as well. During the month of January, code enforcement closed 39 cases, opened 50 new cases, carrying seven of those new 50 cases over. 29 Millview Street, 187 North Gallant Avenue were demolished by their property owners. 350 East Main Street was secured and boarded by Officer Camper, Uniontown Fire Department and K2 Engineering just earlier this week. And 261 East Fayette Street, which is the old Arnold Appliance Building, is currently in the notification phase, and a second letter was sent to the property owner to address the issue with that, for us to hopefully have them remediate the problem, or the city can move forward with what they need to on that, with K2. Any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. Director of Public Works, Mr. Pilewinski?
Good evening again, everyone. First, I'd just like to thank Council and Mayor for the approval of the items I had on the agenda. For sewage report this month, the total collection was $237,948.98. January is always our largest intake month, as there is a good many customers that pay yearly. So that's why that number's so large this month. As far as the crew, we've had a few sewage backups, but nothing major where we've had to do any excavation recently. The sewage guys also managed the compost site, and it is slowed down as the weather has changed. But this is when we do our maintenance for the machine, or major maintenance. Nothing has really came up, but we give the machines a good cleaning and organize the site in preparation for springtime here as it comes quicker than you'd think. For the Street Department, we had a few snowstorms here since the last meeting. We had a small crew. We ran three trucks on each shift. I think they handled it well, though, and kept the streets clear and the citizens able to go where they needed to. The plow trucks are coming up on 20 years old now. During the one snowstorm, one of the trucks did break down. It got stuck in gear. One thing I think that we need to look at for 2025 here is to plan on at least trying to get in the process of replacing the three trucks that are 20 years old. I know they are a expensive cost, but I think it's time to cycle them out here at 20 years old. Plow trucks get beat up, and they've served well in their life here. Other than that, that's really all I have. The Street Department guys have been out trying to tack potholes. The street sweeper's been out. As soon as we put ashes down, it seems like it's ready to sweep them up. So the street sweeper's out sweeping the streets, trying to keep them clean. And hopefully, the snow's slowed down, and we won't start spreading them again to sweep up again. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, it is that time of night where we are going to open up for public comments. So if anyone would like to address Council or address the city, it could be any one of us or anybody in the city. Topics, please be respectful of others that are in attendance and ones that are watching. And also, just to remind everybody, if you haven't taken a look at the guidelines that we have set, they're posted on the doors. But just to give you a pretty quick wrap-up of it, you have three minutes to get your point across. Show's yours. If you could state your name and approach the podium.
Ashley Mattew.
Would you be able to state your address, Ashley? I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
So I'm just wanting to ask the Council of 2023, why did they, first of all, think that it was right to pull my city sales permit, my health permit? I want to know why Kim Marshall took it upon herself to send me a very threatening letter where I had to take legal action against the city, I had to take federal legal action against the city. I'm just wanting to know, why did you guys vote to violate my Amendment 14th, take away my due process?
Any litigation or actions like that, we're going to always refer to our solicitor. So if the solicitor would like to answer that question for us, go ahead.
So we'll actually allow you to provide comments. So this is a period for public comments. It's not a question-and-answer session. So go ahead and complete any additional Q comments you have, and then we may answer questions.
So when we filed federal, you guys came back with Ashley can pay her permit for the next year, and she's able to vote through. Not only were my permits violated, my well-being, my son's well-being, I mean, there was the way that Kim Marshall handled things with my business. I'm just wondering if we can waive my fees for the sales, the city sales permit, because I did not get to utilize them at all. I paid over $200 in a health inspection fee, which I didn't need. I went over to state because of many, many issues with the... many issues with the city health department. Again, violating my rights. She took it upon herself to touch equipment under a lease, remove equipment from a lease. She took it upon herself to go out of jurisdiction. And also, Bill Gerkey took it out of jurisdiction, and I had a restaurant set up, because apparently, the issue was I didn't have a kitchen, which I'm state health inspected now. I'm actually health inspected in Ohio, West Virginia, and here now on my part. I never needed a kitchen to be in one. So, I'm just wondering if we can waive those and also just answer some of these big questions. This took so much out of my volunteer work. I was followed. I had police showing up where I volunteer with kids. I had so, so much harassment, and it was all verified through Kim Marshall. She verified it. I, over and over again, to the public, to potential customers, saying I didn't have my permit. So, there's just a lot here. There's a lot here. So, I would like my permits waived, the fees waived, but just some of these questions I would really like answered. The public should have it answered. Some of the people I work with need to know what happened. And we will be taking further action.
So, we'll thank you for your comment. You can have a seat. I will respond a little bit to that. So, obviously, there's a characterization of a lot of facts there and allegations, which the city would have a very different characterization of a lot of those same facts and allegations. With respect to our request for a waiving of any permit fees, if you want to submit something to the city in writing requesting that, the city will evaluate that request, but that would need to be a request that's submitted in writing.
Thank you, Ashley. Sir, state your name, address.
Larry Hill, level three sixty East Carr Street.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
I just want to comment on, I said on the zoning board, and with the last two years, we've approved a lot of projects, and it's just, it's great to see a lot of them coming, you know, being built, and almost some of them are ready to move into in the area where I live. And it's, it's good to see new stuff being built and some of the old stuff being taken down. My only question is, and my only hope is, that we don't let up on the property owners and have them keep their properties up so we could draw good people into these buildings. I mean, with zoning and everything, I mean, for example, behind my garage, there's a house that the weeds were this high last year. They never cut the grass, but maybe twice. There's a box spring that's been laying there for six months. Things like this make people don't want to come to this area. So, we need to be vigilant and keep trying to keep building new things, tearing old things down. But there's a lot of good people in this city, and there's a lot of good landlords, but there's some bad ones, too. So, when you're doing your landlord thing, keep that in mind. You need to, the good ones we like, the bad ones, we want to make sure they come up to the standards of the good ones. And there's a lot of good landlords. There's a lot of good people living in this city, but we want to keep it that way. We want to try to draw some more in. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Do we have any further public comments? Ma'am, state your name and your address.
My name's Jeff boards, and my address is Smithville, but I bought a building here in the city, so am I allowed to speak?
Yeah, yes, yeah. You're permitted to speak, yes.
I think I need an extra two minutes. The thing, why I'm here is, I bought the building in Uniontown on Morgantown Street. I guess it was a really bad building. The place would call there all the time. Didn't know all this. And...
Give us the microphone, please.
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought my mouse was bigger than that. Anyhow, the reason why I'm here is because of the parking on South Street. You have one handicap parking space where the two-hour free parking is, and you have parking, everybody know where Barton's flower shop used to be? Right there on the corner, as you come around the corner, there's parking from the corner to the barber shop, excuse me, a little space, and then more parking. I got a ticket there. My fault, I guess. I was unloading, because I'm new. I was maybe an inch over where it said, "Unloading, no parking." So, I got a forty-dollar ticket. I paid it. My helper got a fifty-dollar ticket. I paid it. I got there in time to pay twenty-five. Anyways, about the handicap, my husband recently, his handicap, uses a walker. So, the one little space that you have for a handicap, there's a grate there. And as you get out of your car, it's not a very big space, you get stuck in the grate. If you have a cane, you are stuck, because you're going in the grate. So, what I'm asking the council, if you can just put handicap parking from Barton's to the barber shop there, that's where it should be, all those spaces. Those spaces there, people park there all day long. I have photos. I will show them. Some of you know. The mayor knows. Chief knows. I spoke with him. He was very polite. Send Mr. Dillon down, and I showed him the car that parks there all day long, but they didn't get a ticket. There's still parking there. I got proof of every day that they parked there. That parking there should be all handicap. If we want people to come downtown, especially handicap people, I don't know if you have anybody in your family that are handicapped, but it's terrible. The sidewalk, you can't walk on the sidewalk because of the garbage that's laying there. You know that, and Mr. Mayor, you know that as well. I called you. It's still happening. It was clean one day. No garbage cans, bottles laying on the street, cracked, broke, whatever. You've seen it. I've still got pictures of today's garbage. It's terrible. I think these people, the landlords, were fined every day for the garbage that sits there, and also the parking. If those people are parking there every single day, that doesn't give people that want to come downtown any opportunity to park where it's easy to walk. The parking garage, I would never parked there before, but now I will. It's clean, and it's, I feel it's secure now.
Mrs. Boards, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we are over the three minutes, and I would like to hold that three-minute line. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, that's fine.
Thank you.
But I just, just like for the council, just to...
We will take that into consideration, and we'll look at to see what the feasibility is of expanding the handicap.
That would, that would be great. That's the most important thing of all, is just to give the handicap people a chance to park there.
Thank you, and I don't mean to rush you off, but thank you. Are there any further public comments?
I have a, just a, I just want to clear the record. So, January fourth, I was sent a resolution, and prior to this resolution, I wrote an email inquesting information in regards to my department, which I thought was my department. And I just want to clear the air on this, and I'll read it to you. It says, "I was sent this by email after asking certain questions. Made by Council Michael, a resolution from 2014 that basically states the Director of Accounts and Finances oversees the sewage department." So, can I just have clarity on that? Is that my department?
So, is this a question for council, or is this part of the...
I just, I need to know. Is it my department, or is it your department? Just simple, blatant question.
I think I can answer that very quickly for you. I mean, when we reorganize, when we reorganize...
Steve, can you tell me what you did while you were on council? Please come up.
So, we are in the public comment stage. So, if, if the former councilman would like to make a public comment, he's more than welcome to take the podium.
Just for clarity.
Sure.
Steve Visaki, two oh three South Mount Vernon. So, what...
My question is for you. What was your job description, and what were you entitled to do?
I oversaw the street and sewage department. Pretty much the, ran the entire gamut of being in charge of both...
Sewage and street, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I'm just, I'm just confused...
Is that just...
Yeah, that's, that's my answer, but I'm just confused as to why I was sent a resolution from 2014 that was never followed, and it's bogus. Why send me a resolution from 2014 that has never been followed? I mean, that's ludicrous. So, are we prejudiced against me for asking certain questions? I mean, what's the deal?
So, I think that, to answer the question, in 2017, and I have to get the dates correct. So, you are correct. There was a resolution that was passed, and it was...
But it was never followed.
It was, this resolution was passed, and it is your opinion that it was not followed. So, this resolution was passed by council. I voted against it, so I, you know, and so the alluding to that, that it wasn't a, your quote was, "It was a shade." So, this was brought in, and it was, it was proposed by the councilman of that department, Blair Jones. So, and it was voted for one. I voted against it. That was something at the time that I didn't agree with. I can't speak on what had happened, why I wasn't here, but, you know, and I appreciate the former councilman getting up and saying what areas that he had overseen. The fact of the matter is, is that every person in this building that works in the building, except for the treasurer's office, all the clerks, every employee is under the accounts and finances direction. What I allowed a former councilman to speak upon, that, I think that, that, you know, I don't have to go in on that. So, now, to come back to what you're trying to allude is, is that, is it your department, is it my department? Well, the street and sewage departments, the garages are yours. The actual collection of money, of revenues, that falls under the accounts and finances department. So, there's your answer.
Okay. So, again, but why was I sent a resolution just asking basic questions to the department?
Okay. Well, all right.
That's, that's the whole perspective.
So, you, I'm not going to go and answer that question, because you know the reason to that question. You know why you was presented that, and it was presented in that way because of the tactics that you used. So, and I'm not going to answer that question. I mean, because you already know the answer to that, and that's not going to change anything. The change happens by resolution, by ordinance. So, if you don't like something, change it.
I just say it's bogus. Why send something that's never been followed?
You could think something, councilman, you could think something is bogus.
That's why council is the way it is.
Okay, councilman, respectfully, you can disagree with me.
Because of lack of communication, and there's no transparency. That's why the city's running the way it is.
Respectfully, you see, that's another opinion, and it's slandered, because if you have, and what you have watched, many videos, especially the ones that you've commented while we were talking.
Yeah, lots of conversations.
So, you can see that, especially with me in operation, it's very clear how I operate. So, I'm, I don't have to go into that to tell you that. And I'm not going to argue. What I will told you, tell you, is the same thing I told you at that moment, is that if one would disagree with something, one would think or believe that the person would have to create a resolution and get support for it, and then garner the majority of the votes to change that. I'm not going to go back and forth on who controls it, because I control the collection of revenue, and I oversee the accounts.
Oh, I don't care if you oversee that.
So, when it comes to, when it comes to that, you're asking who's over it. I've given you a clear answer. The workers in the garages in your departments are yours. The collection of revenue falls under the accounts of finances.
I know what you're saying here, but you're not getting what I'm saying. You're just rambling. What, all I'm asking is a simple question, why I was sent, clear and concrete, why I was sent that resolution. Just a simple question. It's really never been followed.
That's not for me to answer, why you sent that resolution.
It's crazy. That's just a simple question.
The resolution was not sent by me. I was not asked about that.
And that's a great question. Who was it sent to?
Do you have the email?
I did, but it was forwarded to me.
Okay, so then...
By Tim. So, Tim.
So, then just come straight out and don't beat around the bush. Say what you have.
Who sent the resolution?
Did you say who sent the resolution?
Yeah. Who, who sent you the resolution? Because I asked, you sent it forwarded to me. So, who sent you that resolution?
So, that would have been received in the administrative office. So, they are the keepers of the resolutions here at the city.
I mean, that is, it's bogus, but that's all I have to say.
Okay. So, again, I would suggest that if you would like to change that, that you bring that up as a resolution and garner the support to change it. I don't disagree whether or not, I'm not going to disagree or agree on your point. I just, I can tell you how you can fix it.
There's, clearly, there's a, there's a management problem already, and then we undermined these slick maneuvers like this. I just, I don't get it.
So, there is no slick maneuvers, because this was done in 2017. So, I can't tell you that that was a slick maneuver.
That's your opinion, but that's all I got to say.
That's a fact, because it happened. I was here that day. Do you have anything else for council?
That's it.
Okay. Is there any other public comments? Okay. Well, with that being said, if you would read the adjournment resolution for us.
See, resolved by the City Council, the city of Uniontown. The council hereby adjourns to meet March seventh, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerkey?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Do you have to speak? Are you still there?
Yes, sir.